So we now move to three G. Right, this is going to be fun. An amendment to item three G has been received from councillor Oliver which has been segregated. Councillor Cat indicated he is not willing to accept the amendment. It will be therefore dealt with in the usual way after the substantive motion has been moved and seconded. So I call upon councillor Cat to move this motion. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. In January twenty nineteen, the council declared a climate emergency and accordingly committed to achieving net zero emissions as soon as possible. In September twenty twenty one, the council formally adopted the Glasgow Declaration on Food and Climate, which was a groundbreaking commitment by local and regional governments to tackle the climate emergency through integrated food policies, thus undertaking a proactive to proactively promote the conception of plant-based foods to achieve this goal. Quite bold words from the council and they do require some bold action that recognises every aspect of the various crises we find ourselves in, environmentally, socially and economically. If you want to live up to that word, we can't sit back and ignore the huge part that food systems play in this and the urgent need for institutional changes to eliminate the substantial contribution that food production plays in climate change and global deforestation. Agriculture, forestry and land use contributes a much higher percentage of global emissions than transport, all transport emissions combined. Transport may be the sector which receives a lot of attention and we may see a lot around us, but the food we eat is actually the secret emitter in all of this and we are running out of time to take action. As we know, climate and risk experts predict that the catastrophic effects of climate breakdown will mean systemic cascading risks relating to food insecurity, including food shortages, societal tensions, hunger, malnutrition, unrest and conflict, with further predictions about serious crop failure in the decade of the twenty forty's. When we have already such a huge risk to our food supply from climate change, we should be doing all that we can to ensure that the current behaviours and food systems are not actively contributing to this. There are a number of studies which tell us that we gain more energy and protein from plant-based foods and from animal products. Meanwhile, a kilo of beef will create, on average, twelve times more CO2 than a kilo of plant-based proteins, while producing a litre of dairy milk uses, on average, at least four times as much land as producing a litre of plant milk. Furthermore, only half of our food crop calories feed people directly and only a fraction of the thirty-six per cent of food crop calories that go to feed livestock actually make their way into the meat and milk that we consume. It's a huge waste of food, makes our food production much more carbon intensive and inefficient at actually feeding people while driving even greater food insecurity across the world. It can't be something that we uphold. Even the UK government in their National Food Strategy have noted that a thirty per cent reduction in meat consumption is necessary for future food security. I'd like to preemptively tackle an ignorant claim that is often made, that plant-based diets can be higher in carbon than locally produced meat. Hopefully, anyone that seeks to use that argument will have taken the time to read the text of the motion that points out that the vast majority of imported soy, which has a high carbon footprint, is actually used to feed livestock wherever this livestock is being reared and we do have a huge trade deficit on this actually. So that just increases the carbon footprint of the meat and animal products that we consume. A plant-based diet also has wider impacts than just the environment. Sustain Alliance estimates that overconsumption of meats costs the NHS about one point two billion annually and is responsible for forty-five thousand deaths per year. This motion is proposing some very small changes that the council can make to do our bit in ensuring that we have a sustainable food production system which is able to meet our needs in the long term. To be very clear, a food system based around animal products in the long term will not do this. This motion has a range of actions that will improve the accessibility and availability of plant-based options across the city, will share information about the benefits of reducing consumption of animal products and enable communities to grow their own food cheaply and easily through community gardens, an option that many people currently do not have and one that will be a real lifeline to those people that are struggling under the cost of living crisis. I'd like to finish by saying Norwich is well-known as a vegan and vegetarian centre of the UK. Many would like to say that it's London, but many visitors have been pleasantly surprised by the huge array of options that we have across the city that we should be really, really proud of that aren't available elsewhere. The motion will strengthen this reputation even further, I think. Many other local authorities, including Edinburgh, Cambridge and Oxfordshire, have passed similar motions. So let's make sure that we do not fall by the wayside and that we take the action that we have already committed by declaring a climate emergency back in twenty nineteen. If we want to stick to our word, we should be passing this motion. Thanks.
Thank you very much, councillor Cat. I call upon councillor Osborne to second the motion.
Thank you and thank you to councillor Cat for proposing it. And this motion is really evidence-based. Councillor Cat has highlighted and outlined some of the evidence of the carbon impact of plant-based diets and why those are beneficial. I would talk a bit more about the social science evidence behind it. This motion is about change at the level of institutions and social norms. It goes beyond the limited and limiting approach to behaviour change that sees change as being all about individual choices. I've had a number of conversations with Labour councillors about that paradigm. There's a very useful report from the Behaviour Change Unit at what used to be Bayes that outlines how behaviour change happens. It shows that, yes, individuals may feel that they have agency and they can choose whether to eat a beef burger or to eat a bean burger, but far more important than our individual choices are the contexts and circumstances that shape or constrain those choices. In the words of those report authors, these social material and financial dimensions of our choice environment really matter. In fact, they reliably matter much more than our knowledge or attitudes. And so it's the actions of institutions, including institutions like this council, that play the biggest role in shaping the choice environment. And governments, including local government, can change the choice environment upstream by incentivising businesses to align with net zero and social goals. They can also change the environment midstream by making environmentally friendly options the default, by encouraging social norms and encouraging the visibility of pro-environmental behaviours, and they can make it easier to make the right choices. And individual behaviour change, by contrast, only has downstream effects and is the most limited form of behaviour change. And so this motion sets out to change the direction of the flow of that stream. It's based on sound behaviour change principles. It looks to encourage the changes that I outlined just now in incentivising businesses, redirecting investment and redirecting consumer choices. It reinforces a growing social norm that meat and dairy should be an exception rather than the rule. And there's examples of this approach in action already when you look at public health interventions around food and healthy eating. So businesses and right-wing think tanks have cried wolf about the sugar tax and I would encourage anyone to heed the way that that debate has been followed and not apply the same principles to this motion. Because those right-wing groups say that the sugar tax restricts individuals' freedom of choice, but actually what it does is addresses the obesogenic environment and it redirects investment into projects that benefit social value. So we need the same and more ambition to shift away from a carbonogenic environment and an environment that makes carbon-heavy choices the default. And this motion seeks to bring about that change with benefits for health, the economy and the environment all in one.
Thank you very much, councillor Osborne. We've had an amendment submitted which hasn't been accepted, so I'm now going to call upon councillor Oliver to move the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, in summary, I've moved the amendments as outlined in the papers and we all know what we're trying to achieve, we all agree on where we need to be, continuity and existence depends on it. Such an important motion requires proper consideration and in its amended form allows us to shape the direction of sustainable travel and to be an exemplar for the city. The single most important step that most people can take to protect the environment is indeed to eat pure animal products. This is beyond doubt, but we cannot be so simplistic as to assume that vegan automatically means better for the environment and our health, which is why I move this amendment. Could we honestly say that someone who eats eggs from rescued battery hens is doing less for the environment than someone who eats vegetables that are airfreighted from half a world away? We also need to be mindful, we're asking people to make a change and this can be daunting. I believe that we can show the citizens of Norwich that it does not have to be one way or another, that achieving net zero does not need to mean the end of the foods that we enjoy. In amending this motion, I move that we can commit to providing high-quality, tasty, sustainable plant-based food produced without exploitation of humans or animals. I'm confident that before long we'll see the vegan options snapped up out of choice, not obligation. As someone who's been vegan for fifteen years, I've seen times change in favor of plant-based diets.
Councillor Oliver, will you just stop for a moment, please?
I've never seen anyone change their position from being hectored or told what to do.
However, I do expect... Please, just give me a moment. I do expect basic civility in this chamber. You will listen to civilly, please listen to the other speakers civilly. If you don't want to do that, as I say, there are three great big doorways there. Sorry for that, councillor Oliver.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I also understand most people want to eat less meat, but one thing that gets in the way of this is a sense that they're not doing enough if they're not able to eat only plant-based foods. There are times when we are right to demand change and there are times when we can present alternatives to people and make sure the desired outcome is the most palatable.
Thank you very much. I call upon councillor Waters to second the amendment.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And of course, the shadow over all of this is the fact that there are people who have no food choices because they have no adequate resources and they are dependent on going to food banks. You may bury your head, councillor Oliver, but beyond the middle-class environs in which you live, there are people who are in really critical...
Yeah, so, okay, if it is a piece of information, please go ahead.
I don't see what my personal circumstances has to do with this motion that is about the provision of food within this council and what this council can do to show the citizens of the city.
Thank you very much.
Just since you were rather bored with the, one of the things that concerns this administration, which is food poverty in the city. So there's not much difference between us in terms of the issues, the importance of plant-based options as an important initiative. And as councillor Cat admitted himself, and very positively, that Norwich has a reputation which is very high in terms of vegan, vegetarian options, and that's very good news. That's the kind of city we are, that's really, really good opportunity. But there is a point, isn't there, about how you continue to progress along that continuum? And you can talk about, you know, nudge theories from Whitehall ministries, you can talk about telling people what is right for them and then seeking to enforce it. Or you can work on the basis that the narrative is very much in the direction of people wanting choice and wanting choice other than meat and wanting vegetarian and vegan options, but they want to make that choice themselves. And the places that I've visited and actually probably prompted by the motion that councillor Cat put forward, as I, you know, look around, cafes, restaurants, and those options are there. And there is nothing worse than trying to, as it were, impose a narrower series of options to make people resist, to get a rather sterile argument going, which then starts to create resistance when actually the narrative is moving with the opportunity that people have to have free choice. And so I can guarantee, for example, that next week's leaving do for myself and councillor Harris, there will be the full range of options available to all those who attend that event. So I think we just need to be careful that we are not imposing on people and I think that would work very much against the travel, the direction of travel of this issue. So I hope very much that you'll be able to support the amendments that councillor Oliver has put forward.
Thank you very much, councillor Waters. So we are looking at the amendments proposed. And bearing that in mind, do any of the councillors wish to speak on this? Councillor Sands? Councillor Sands, you caught my eye first, please. Go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will be speaking in favour of the amendments that councillor Oliver has moved. They introduce the important concepts of respect, understanding, balance and appropriateness into this motion. The benefits of a balanced diet, including of course, plant-based food, have long been recognised by health authorities as well as your ground. So the real question is how to follow advice on healthy eating, doing so in a way which promotes respect and understanding, except that people have the freedom to choose and for their choices to be respected. This is important to me and so is not destroying small businesses who are already struggling by unilaterally imposing changes to their leases and terms which could threaten their very viability. When we declared a climate emergency in twenty nineteen, we also declared a socio-economic emergency too. This is perhaps forgotten by the opposition. Supporting thriving local businesses and not undermining their business model ensures employment, people having an income from which they can pay taxes, which support public services, this is valuable too. The motion calls not only for the removal of food containing meat events catered for by council, but also calls for the removal or downgrading of menus at council-owned or managed stores, concessions, kiosks and businesses. This not only imposes restrictive business practices, but removes choice by imposing a one-source food option. In any case, not only are council-caated events few and far between in these days of austerity, choice has always been offered for as long as I've been a councillor. The so-called plant-based treaty circulated so widely in recent weeks and months, no doubt providing spur for the Green Party for the current motion, calls for nothing less than a plant-based food economy for all, removing the element of choice in what we eat. The Green Party lured the production of soy products. However, the Sustainable Food Trust does not share their enthusiasm...
Councillor Sands, can you just focus on the amendment? Because I think you're bringing up points that we've already debated.
It focuses on them and it attacks their motion. The massive deforestation in environments and social degradation in the Amazon, Serado and other regions of the South American, where rainforests and other virgin lands have been cleared, often by using forest fires, meaning to raise...
Please, I'm not saying that you shouldn't say these things, but at this point, you're talking about the wider motion rather than arguing why we should accept these amendments.
Well, the motion called upon the new, if the motion called upon the new president of Brazil to end all deforestation in the Amazon and to move to sustainable agriculture, not based upon the monoculture of soy, I might find a kernel within it to support. And interestingly, it takes eight litres of water to produce one litre of dairy milk and a hundred and fifty-eight litres to produce one litre of almond drink or soy drink.
Thank you, councillor Sands. Thank you very much.
Well, I haven't finished.
Well, thank you very much for what you've said.
Our three point one million tonnes of soy imported, of which only thirty-five per cent ends up in livestock feed, the rest is in human feed.
Please cease, thank you very much. Next person to caught my eye was councillor Kidman. Please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I support a diet that moves away from meat and dairy because we do need to. I want to address point number one in the motion under council therefore resolves to, number one. Following the pilot by Cambridge City Council, which is cited in the motion, to offer more plant-based food, came a report. The food provided was very fresh, good quality and visually appealing, and the social enterprise provided fantastic service during the event. However, there was extremely low uptake, sorry I'm speaking so fast, I do too. It was an extremely low uptake of plant-based food options, under ten per cent of people tried these options whilst the vegetarian options and meat-dairy options were all eaten. The general feedback from attendees was that plant-based options should be available as a part of buffet for those who'd like this choice, but most people preferred the non-plant-based options and some people, the report says, felt under pressure to eat what they wouldn't usually choose. The report said that almost all of the plant-based food was not eaten and therefore had to be thrown away, which it said resulted in significant food waste. Officers recommended that the authority begin with offering twenty-five per cent of the food as plant-based at civic events, increasing in future years as long as people ate the food. We know when we throw food away, it rots and releases methane and methane has more than eighty times the warming power of carbon dioxide. And finally, Lord Mayor, I have soy and milk in tea. To be catered for wherever I go would be fantastic. However, I would be uncomfortable making people drink what I like but which they find unpalatable. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Next councillor, catch my eye was councillor Bogalai. Please go ahead. I'm going to speak on the motion, amendment.
I am, yeah, I'm going to speak on the speeches made in favour of the amendment and therefore the amendment. So first of all, I'd like to clarify the report that councillor Osborne was quoting from and that councillor Waters was rejecting as a Whitehall report was not actually produced by the government. You may remember that it was published on a government website and then pulled by the Boris Johnson government because it was too difficult, because it raised issues around aviation and it raised issues around meat consumption. So I'm quite surprised that you're siding with Boris Johnson here and making arguments around forced choice in many states. I actually think that's quite dangerous. It was a really well-thought-out report by independent researchers and it was pulled by the government and it was hidden really well. I mean, it took us a long time to get our hands on it at the time. So I'd really like to see that we're not siding with Boris Johnson on the narrative around a nanny state enforced choice and against independent researchers and academics. So that's a start with. I think the second thing is that we're talking about leadership. So this is what your motion, what your amendment is basically undermining. We're not talking about changing what people eat at home, we're not forcing anyone to do anything, we're talking about showing leadership at the council. Now, there is very recent research that shows that the concern about climate change has gone up, but the confidence that businesses and government, including local government, show the leadership to tackle it has gone down significantly. I'm not surprised why, if we can't even get our act together and show leadership in the kind of few events that we're hosting. It's not about forcing anyone to do anything, it's not about getting businesses out of business, it's about leadership, it's about social norms. One of the things that has the most influence on signal and new behaviour, and I think Coggit has shown us really significantly that that's the case, is social norms. People do things if you show them that we're behind it. Today, you're not showing leadership and you're not showing the social norm, you're not showing you're behind it, you've significantly watered this down and that really undermines the path we all need to take and it's quite disappointing.
Thank you very much, councillor Bogalai. Next person was councillor Osborne.
Thank you. I have to say, I'm really disappointed in the Labour group here. I thought we'd moved beyond this, because I've had conversations with individual Labour councillors and this, about this false narrative of individual behaviour change, individual choice. This amendment buys into that false narrative, it's really stuck in the past, probably twentieth century, sometime in the nineteen fifties probably, and at best it shows an outdated and limited understanding of how then behaviours change. Please look at the evidence on that, and worst, it's counterproductive. I would hope that we would be as an evidence-based council, that we base our policies and our debates on evidence. Councillor Cat set out some of the evidence for the carbon impact of plant-based diets versus meat and dairy-based diets. That is incontrovertible, you can go and look at that evidence, there's plenty of it. Councillor Bogalai set out some of the evidence on social behaviour change and really sort of arguing against that and saying that we are trying to restrict choice is the same tactics and it's the same kind of disambiguation that we see from the fossil fuel industry. The idea of the carbon footprint and individual choice was invented by BP in the early two thousands and that was where that idea of individual choice came from. It was intended to divert attention from the structural changes that were needed, the changes that are needed at a government level, that are needed at a business level, the level of diverting investment and focusing attention instead on guilt and on individual choice as if that's something that's incontrovertible and that cannot be changed. Actually, all the evidence shows that if you want to change people's behaviour, like we have done with sugar, like we've done with alcohol in some places, like we've done with gambling, like we've done with so many public health interventions, that needs to come from a government level, you cannot tell people it's up to you. So that's what this motion is about and really I would urge the Labour councillors here to get with the picture, look at the evidence of behaviour change. If you really want to be addressing issues across the board, taking a really forward-looking, not, this doesn't just apply to climate change, it applies to social problems as well, it applies to poverty, actually look at the sides of behaviour change and consider how the actions of this council can contribute to that rather than sitting on your hands and leaving it to individuals.
Thank you very much, councillor Osborne. Councillor Lubick, please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm sorry, councillor Osborne, you're going to have to convince me as well. As a Liberal Democrat, we're very happy, I do believe in offering these options. I don't think we should be dictatorial and say that everybody should eat one type of food. So we're happy to, I'm happy to support the amendment and to promote a shift towards plant-based diets. And when you say that we should look at the evidence, as we've heard from councillor Kidman, recently Cambridge did, I think they had a pilot whereby they did only offer the plant-based food and a significant amount of food had to be thrown away. So by giving people a choice, I think you are encouraging them to try new foods and you can also sort of explain why you're doing that. But I think in trying to only give, not give a choice and just to give plant-based foods, I think in the short term, it's going to be counterproductive and there will be waste. And I think it was a Labour councillor at Cambridge said, we cannot force people to eat food they do not want to eat. The task is to make it so good that people will want to eat it without being told to. So I hope that this amendment is carried, that we should encourage people to act, to do the one thing that will be the most impactful in helping the climate crisis and that is of moving towards a plant-based diet.
Thank you very much, councillor Lubick. Next person to catch my eye was councillor Stunard. Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Lord Mayor. I want to raise a few issues that have been raised. The first is we're being told that we're not showing leadership. Actually, we are, we are showing leadership. The leadership we're showing is for individual choice, for people to make their own decisions. Oh, we're not suggesting, we're not suggesting you're buying into, as you suggest, this idea that individual choices are better than other methods of achieving change in behaviour. What we're arguing is that we need to respect the right of our citizens to make individual choices about what they eat. It's interesting actually, looking at the, some of the phrases in our amendments which have not been accepted, let's have a look at them. Respecting individuals' rights and freedoms, you've rejected that, you won't accept that amendment. The word respectfully again, you've refused that. So that suggests to me, and actually from the body language on the other side of the chamber tonight, lack of respect for local people, bit of arrogance, bit of patronising attitude, that's what I suspect, that's what I'm getting. Now, I'm somebody who supports diets that move from meat to plant-based diet. But as someone said earlier on, and this is really important, if you're trying to impose choices on people, you don't win them over, you actually breed resentment, you actually get the opposite reaction to the one that you want to achieve. So I'm really, really clear, this is about us not trying to manipulate people into doing what we think is best for them, but giving them the choice to make, the ability to make the right choices for them. That's really, really important. It's a fundamental principle and it's fundamentally what separates us on the different sides of the chamber. You think you know better and you can impose it on people, we don't. We want to give people choices. And I want to finish on this, because we are, as councillor Waters has said, in the midst of a cost of living crisis. I don't know about in your wards, but in my wards, I meet people who are having to choose whether to eat or a eat... choose whether to eat or aid eat, people who are taking food from food banks that they can't afford to eat. And here you are, having us tonight, discussing what type of party food should be served at city hall functions. Shame on you, that's an absolute disgrace and it shows how out of touch you are with the real living conditions of the people of this city.
Thank you very much councillor Stunard. Next, eh, councillor Brochett-Cultum, please go ahead.
Our food bank and community fridge are given over a hundred free takeaway meals each Friday, and it's a godsend for many people. By us taking the food from the nearby hotel each week is taking away the food waste. I don't think the people needing this food would be very happy for their meat to be taken out.
Thank you very much councillor Brochett-Cultum. Councillor Giles, please.
Eh, thank you, I'll speak about the amendment proposed at the end of, eh, 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 resolution four, eh, which proposes that we, eh, we oblige our, our tenants to provide vegetarian or vegan options while not, eh, insisting that they all redesign their menus. And I was wondering, as, as the cabinet member for, responsible for the market, whether you could clarify both for me and for the EDP sitting behind, whether you want me to go around every single individual market trader over the coming weeks, if we pass this motion unamended and insist that they all amend their, their menus in accordance with your demands, eh, so that different things are placed at different places on the menu? And I was also wondering whether your candidate in Thorpe Hamlet, the outgoing chair of the Norwich Market Trader Association, would support such a policy, were I to advocate it at the next Market Trades Association meeting? Maybe you'd like to come along and suggest it yourselves?
Thank you very much councillor Giles. Councillor Haynes, you wish to speak, please go ahead.
Thank you, this is starting to get a bit like the conspiratorial debates about low traffic neighbourhoods, where the people who are offering the choice of having everything, um, having more choices available to you are actually accused of doing the opposite. Um, so councillor Kidman pointed out that, um, where there are several options, um, some of the plant-based food won't get eaten, um, and, well, if you go to an event and there's things you know you like, things you might like, things you're not too sure about, you're going to stick with what's familiar. But if you're invited to try something new, you're likely to try it, and that becomes a choice that you didn't have before. Personal choice depends, um, as has been said, personal choice depends on the options that are available, the options that you can afford, and if you're exposed to plant-based food, um, that gives you more options, not fewer.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wish to speak? Nope. So we... Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, please, sorry. Councillor Haynes, I think, yeah, go on, go on, Beth.
Thank you, um, we've had, I sort of want to support this amendment really, in terms of my own experience of behaviour change, we've had some, I have to say, I don't expect it from some colleagues on the opposite benches, slightly patronising comments about not knowing about behaviour change. This is my bread and butter, this is what I do, in a very real way, day in, day out, um, where it's about life and death. Um, if in my job I imposed choice to change behaviour, imposed option things, I wouldn't achieve that behaviour change, and that is about whether people live or die. I have to take them on a journey of change, and that's the journey, in my case, of a journey of recovery, where I expose them to options and alternatives and help them and support them to make choices. So it's a providing options. If I imposed those decisions, I know in a very different setting within mental health, but they would back up from me, they wouldn't engage in that process of behaviour change that is vital to keep them alive. So I think it's a very fundamental thing about allowing someone to have a journey themselves rather than telling them. If I as a professional came in and said, "No, you can't do this, you can't do that", they wouldn't engage in me. So I could go into it in a lot more detail, but I don't like, I find it quite insulting not to be told that there are people on these benches who don't know about that process of change. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Giles. Councillor Haynes, please go ahead.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Um, on the point about our new candidate in Thorpe Hamlet, I'm aware, he is aware of this motion and, um, supports it, so I can answer that directly. On the point about food poverty, I think we're conflating a couple of different issues here. We're conflating the idea for people to be able to eat things that fit their diet at council events, of which the Green Group host none, I would like to point out, um, and confl- and also conflating the very, very real issues of food poverty in our community and what the council can do for those. That's been addressed in other motions over the course of the years. Um, people on all sides of the chamber have spoken eloquently and about the need to reduce food poverty, the need to support people in our community in poverty. Representatives of all our groups have done work at County Hall as well about extending the eligibility of free school meals vouchers, for example, for outside of what the government has tried to give. And as a recipient of those free school meal vouchers to my children, I'm grateful for that. There are people on all sides of this chamber who have experience of food poverty, and I think it's really, I don't think we should be making assumptions about other people's personal sta- status, their financial status at this point or any other point in their life. On a debate, it is not about that. We do not want to make, to make people in food poverty feel like we are trying to take stuff away from them. We want to give choice to people. This was supposed to be a positive motion about doing something for the environment and also acknowledging that there are social benefits to this as well. This was not supposed to get derailed by people who wanted to make a point because an election is coming. We tried to put this motion in January, it was turned down. We're now trying to make some positive points about this, and it's a bit disappointing that it's been used to make points about other people's personal statuses and turn it into a debate about something it isn't. And I think, you know, we should just probably return to the actual motion now. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I think we'll just finish this and, um, then look at the three-hour rule. Um, so do any of the members wish to speak? Okay. Councillor Oliver, do you want to respond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, yes. Um, briefly, I'd like to thank members for their thoughtful comments and, um, would also, oh, I'm so, sorry, it's so late. Um, if it was literally just about the, um, providing of refreshments that are plant-based at the few, um, occasions that we do this as a, as full council, then I think that might be considered more favourably, however, it's the unintended consequences I think we're more concerned about. For example, if, um, somebody's having a cup of tea with a non-vegan cake in the Lord Mayor's parlour, um, you know, who would be policing that? Um, I hope that, um, all members will feel able to support the, um, motion as amended, and, um, I'll leave it there, thank you.
Okay, when I vote on this, all those in favour of the amendment being made? All those who wish to abstain from this? Or those who are against the amendment being made? The amendment's carried, we now have the substantive motion in front of us. So having got that business over, um, I think this is, in the words of the Constitution, a convenient time. Um, we've been going three hours, in fact, we've been going slightly more than three hours. Do members wish to continue? Or do they wish to adjourn immediately? So we'll need to take a vote, sure. So, so that's a procedural motion, so the procedural motion is, and I'm going to ask for a mover and a, well, I'm the mover actually, I'm going to ask the second, eh, for a second, the procedural motion is that we adjourn immediately. No, I'm sorry, I've mis- misread my, do you want to, or do you want to carry on? So I, I'm, right, well, you know, to adjourn immediately, I think...
Propose we move to a vote on the amended motion.
Okay. All right, we've, good old seventy-two, paragraph seventy-two has been invoked to move to a vote.
No, no, we need to have members voting for this in the meeting.
Well, I think we've just had a, a motion, so... Say that again? Right, okay, I, I'm told from, eh, our legal adviser here that the precedent is taken by the procedural motion, do we continue or not? So we need a mover to continue.
I propose we continue.
Okay, and anyone's proposed, eh, okay, so we'll now move, do you wish to continue? Right, okay, so we're going to carry on.
I'll move to a vote on the, eh, move to a vote on the substantive.
So now we have a procedural motion moving to a vote. Do we have a second? I think we do. So we now vote on this. All those in favour of moving straight to a vote on this? So, um, we are now going to vote on the, no, what? On...
On the substantive motion, so can we vote, if we have to give them a chance?
Right, okay, I, we still have to go through this, so give me a brick wall, please. Um, group spokespersons on the amended motion, which is now the substantive motion, and, um, you put a reminder, who was spoken?
Councillor Oliver?
So we've, so, okay, so the substantive motion has been proposed and seconded, we've amended it, so it's group spokespersons, councillor Oliver, please speak, please respond.
Thank you, I'll just speak quickly. Thank you to councillor Cat for bringing the motion, and its now amended form we contend it into positive actions which further the goals of creating a truly sustainable city which puts social, economic and environmental justice as its core. As Norwich City Council, we're looked to by the citizens of Norwich as an exemplar, we can show what's possible, and as you've heard, we declared a climate emergency in 2019, have committed to net zero by 2030, into a deadline of 2050 for the city as a whole. As we're here in the chamber, you look behind you, you see the mural by Gennady Ivanov, which is a striking work of art and speaks to the future we have in store. If we do not make these changes, we can't be repeating the same actions and be surprised when we end up in the same fix. I would like to very briefly reference a book called The Joyful Environmentalist, How to Practice Without Preaching, by a wonderful author called Isabel Lozada, who watches a documentary called Cowspiracy, which will be familiar to many, and... Sorry. And confirms that, yes, between somewhere between fifteen and fifty-one percent of all greenhouse gases are caused by animal agriculture. Animals are the middle body, inefficient one of that, inefficient one of that. Children starve because grains fed to animals, and yet we cannot state with certainty, plant-based food is always the only option. Vegan is one option, vegan is another, except this food's not made solely from plants, no one wants to see it going to waste. We have to remember, we don't live in a world where we have equal access to resources, so as well as the means of transport, we need to consider the cost of the energy to prepare the food, now so more than ever. We welcome the inclusion of the importance of community gardens in the motion, but they are part of the picture, but for a sustainable solution to the embedded problem of food poverty and inequitable access to the basic requirements, we urgently need a change in central government. Vegan food is a less expensive option, it is impo- it is possible to produce a vegan food on pennies, but it's not a lack of ability or creativity that pushes people into poverty but a woeful policy of thirteen years of austerity, and the skills one has to develop to survive on too little, and I'm talking of people in our city today to survive, never mind thrive, or ones that require a lot of time and resources. We can provide people options, I can personally attest to the positive effects of vegan cake, but we always must respect people's autonomy while making the preferred choice the most appetizing. So, Lord Mayor, this mo- motion is amended, continues and develops our agendas towards promoting and developing plant-based food in a reasonable, appropriate, sustainable and respectable way, working with our citizens and city businesses on the journey ahead. I hope everyone will now support this.
Thank you very much. Um, group spokespersons, councillor Lubick, please speak. You don't have to, but you're down. Yes, reserve the right to speak, yes. Well, I will see. Does anybody? No? We've had the move to, we've had the move to a vote, so we now give back councillor Cat the right to speak.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I kind of want to address some of the, some of the various comments that have been made here that have been quite scaremongering, to be quite honest with you. Um, I think you'll be aware, if you've read the text of the motion, it's not talking about policing people's food choices, um, and there's been various examples raised about, um, the things that will happen, um, and, you know, the, the things, eh, the places which are going to have to completely change their practices and, um, the people that are going to have to change their choices. You're all very aware that this motion wouldn't do that, and you're using that as a, um, just for political purposes really, um, you're all very clear on that, I hope. Um, you, you mentioned social and economic crises, again, mentioned within the motion, mentioned within the speeches, um, and again, the whole point of this motion and the whole reason for bringing this is because we have a huge issue of food insecurity, um, and if we don't tackle that, then that is only going to add to the social and economic crises that we have when we talk about, um, and also, please don't lecture me about the conditions that my residents live in, um, I mean, I, I deal with on a separate issue, um, so many people that live in awful housing conditions that this council completely ignores, so please do not lecture me on that at all. Um, and also, don't, don't talk about personal circumstances, I mean, you obviously assume that everyone on this side of the bench is middle class, and that supports the statements you would like to make about us. I come from a working-class background, as do many people in my party who are socialist, um, who, former, former member of the Labour Party as well, um, so, so I, I just don't think that those things are relevant at all. Um, again, I mean, there was comments about, about market, again, if you wrote the motion, it would say, it says retender, um, so obviously that wouldn't happen, um, as well. Um, nobody's trying to police, um, people's food choices here. Um, and i- i- if, if other amendments, um, seek to say that the council will continue to do things, we mentioned the mural, um, which is an incredible piece of art, I'm really glad that it's here, um, you said that you will continue to make sure that plant-based foods options are available within, um, within the council. Um, at the event that I was unveiled, there were no plant-based options, the caterers confirmed that to us, so your amendment is mute there. Um, we also talked about community gardens and giving that option to people to create, eh, to, um, eh, grow their own food, and that being a really vital resource in the cost of living crisis that we do have at the moment and giving power back to people. Um, again, you, you, um, put an amendment saying that, um, you would continue to promote the establishment of new community gardens. Um, I mean, I raised, um, the idea for the ministry community garden years ago, um, as a member of the public, and it's been constantly ignored by cabinet members and the leaders of the council who have, eh, said that they would email me, set up meetings, that has not happened. Um, so if you'd like to, eh, carry on with that now, that would be great, um, but I'd, I'd still hope that you support this motion because it is really, really crucial, this thought.
Thank you very much councillor Cat. So, eh, at this point, we will now move to a vote on the substantive motion as amended. So, all those who are in favour, please raise your hand. Is that unanimous? So that's unanimous. Good members.